You're muted.
I'm muted.
You're muted.
She's muted.
All right, some of us said the Pledge of Allegiance an hour ago, but if people would like to do that, we can say, open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the meeting is called to order. I apologize for being on Zoom, but if we seem to manage just fine. So do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight, Brandon? I don't have any.
No, some were made this afternoon, but a new agenda was posted and is printed out here.
There's some copies here, if anyone would like one.
Do we have any declarations of conflicts of interest? Tammy, do you want to declare your?
Sorry, related to the leases, where am I trustee with the historical society? I'll have to step back.
All right, and Judy will note in the minutes that you abstain when we get to those votes. Do people have a chance to review the minutes that were provided from the last meeting? Did anybody have any changes other than the ones that Judy circulated? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All in favor? All right, that's everybody. Were there any communications that select board members or the town manager received from the public in the last couple of weeks?
I got one. It's a neighbor of mine, and he is interested in finding a space to meet with people that might be feeling anxious and just concerned about climate change and things. It was not a political group, but you know, just their own personal well-being. And he wanted to see if there was a space he could use. So I thought either there might be a space here, depending on the time of day, or the library would also be a good place. So I was going to check out the library on his behalf, but it was kind of an interesting request. It sounded reasonable.
That is, and I'm sure the library would be happy to accommodate discussions about that. Any other communications from the public? No? Okay. Did everybody receive the warrant that Irene circulated this afternoon?
Jane, Van had a comment.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Maybe Steve, you wouldn't maybe have that fellow also come to the residency committee?
I'll let him know about it. Yeah, yeah.
Right, then he might feel better once he knows we're doing our part to try to address those issues. So Irene circulated the warrant this afternoon. I have one question, Irene, which is, what is HB insurance?
That under Town Office?
Which department is it under?
Oh, great. Now I have to screw around and find it, but I will. It wasn't a tiny number, which is why I wasn't familiar with. Oh, it's Hub International New England Insurance, under Town Office. What is that?
I am not sure. I haven't got the detail, and I usually grab that. I will have to get back to you on that.
Okay, just because it wasn't something I remembered seeing before.
I don't recall seeing it before. It could be that one of the regular insurances that we pay has changed the company name or something, but I'll look into that and find out exactly what that's for, and I can do that tomorrow morning.
So what company, what kinds of insurance do we have other than MMA insurance? Brandon, do you know?
I do not, no.
Well, maybe this is something we can get an update on in the future, the different types of insurance we're paying. I mean, obviously, there might be things that are related to our emergency services. I just have no idea.
It looks like it's an employee benefits, employee benefits broker.
A broker, okay. Did anybody else have any questions on the warrant? If not, then Irene, you can send that around to be signed. So this is our time during the meeting to invite public comments about any issues that are not on the agenda. Those will get dealt with in due course. Is there anybody that has a public comment? All right, then, moving to our regular agenda items on the agenda. We have, I hope, the final versions of the leases.
Jane, before the meeting started, Nat, let me know that there are things that need to be addressed on the lighthouse lease. And so it may make sense to focus on the old library and the schoolhouse. I believe that those have everything that they need, and then we can hear Nat's feedback and his attorney's feedback and see what else needs to be cleaned up on the lighthouse.
Are there time constraints to when we have to approve these? I mean, I know that Tara gets absentee ballots printed soon because people can start voting absentee like April 12th or something. So it's not like we're going to have a lot of time for any more changes to these leases, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, if need be, we can call a special select board meeting to review it. You know, there's a chance that that could be ready in two days, so. Nat, do you have any context on what is still not correct that you'd like to see adjusted? Knowing that we got these leases right before the meeting started and.
Your attorney, Bill Kelly, and my attorney have been going back and forth. He's been in court. She sent copies of what she would like to have changed. They're both sort of on the same page. And I told her this morning that this was going to be on the agenda. Bill Kelly was not aware that the leases were going to be on the agenda, and what he sent down, as far as the lighthouse goes, needs to be cleaned up. There's nothing really controversial in there, but there are some things that are repeated in the wrong places. The Historical Society, library, and schoolhouse leases are all okay. It's just that my lease, which is a little more complicated than their lease, I want to make sure that it's where it should be, and it's probably 99% there, but I'm not comfortable with what he sent down at 5:00 this afternoon.
So you're saying that there's not substantial differences? It's minor that they're working out. What's the problem then that we couldn't go ahead?
I would feel uncomfortable if you accepted a lease that wasn't what it should be.
But in what way is it not what it should be, Nat?
He adds in two places that the Coast Guard will be responsible for the light and foghorn. And there is one question in the insurance section that needs to be clarified. Not major, but I would not feel comfortable in having Scott sign the lease with double references in the wrong places. And I just think that since me and myself, I've put in over 20 hours on this little project, and I would like to make sure that the lease that you people agree to is what I'm comfortable with.
Is that reference to the Coast Guard incorrect? The reference to the Coast Guard responsibility?
Well, when Jane asked me to come up with a lease originally, she needed to have things spelled out. And in the agreement with the town and the Coast Guard, the Coast Guard has now made it very clear that the only two things they are responsible for are the light and the foghorn.
And that's what the lease says. That's what it says.
In two places, though. It shouldn't be in two places.
Well, what different, all it says is that the parties agree that the Coast Guard is responsible for the foghorn and the light, and we do agree that that's true. So I'm just trying to avoid any delay to getting this done because of our tight timeline. We all want to get this before the voters in May and not have any delays. And if we, even if we could agree to vote on the leases tonight, and if there's some very minor change that needs to be made, it would be best, I think, if we could get agreement on the leases. But let's start with the other two, and then we'll talk more about this if people need to. So and as far as I could tell, Brandon, the leases that you just circulated are not different than the leases that you sent us a week ago from Bill. Did anybody else see anything different from the leases that were circulated to us, I think, on March 4?
I assume that that would be true because he's, Bill's been talking to the lighthouse's attorney. I can't imagine that she has been sharing concerns about the Historical Society building. And so the changes that we got for the Historical Society and the old schoolhouse, those are based on feedback from the last meeting with the Historical Society. So the attorney that Nat's been working with has not been involved. And so these changes that Bill sent today were specific to the lighthouse.
Okay, so let's turn first to the old library lease. People on the select board have had a chance to review the old library lease, and this incorporates the discussions that we had two weeks ago with the members of the Historical Society at our last meeting. And then, just so that everybody knows, Nat and Scott and Brandon and I circulated a list of the things we wanted Bill Kelly to incorporate into the lease before the final version, and everybody agreed to those, and this old library lease incorporated those suggestions from everyone. So do people have any other questions or concerns about the old library lease? So do I hear a motion to submit to the public for a vote in May on the lease to the Historical Society for the old library building pursuant to the terms of this lease? Okay, any discussion? Are there any comments from the people there in the audience before we vote?
I think you've inserted the language we agreed to change or to add, such as after 20 years or after each five-year additional term may be granted by the select board about voter approval. Turned about, and then you inserted language about repairs, bringing the town about repairs. It could be done via email to the town manager, which was what we said. So I think everything is in agreement, and the other language we know is standard legal lease language. So I think we're fine. We're good to go.
Okay, so all in favor of putting this old library lease to the voters in May, raise your hands. Is that unanimous? I can't really see on Zoom. That's four of us with Tammy abstaining. Okay, and now let's turn to the schoolhouse little building lease, which this is the first version people have seen, but it essentially mirrors the old library lease and I hope incorporates everybody's concerns about that.
I'll make a motion that we approve that lease for the same reason we approved the previous one and put it to the voters.
Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Van seconded it.
Okay, any discussion from anyone? Any comment from the Historical Society or any other member of the public?
The language is basically the same, and you've inserted the changes, so. Not much more to be said.
All right, then, all in favor, raise your hands. So that's four of us with Tammy abstaining. Okay, thank you. And now we'll move to the lighthouse lease, which I would hope that we can approve the lease. And if there are some very minor changes that aren't substantive, then maybe the group would be willing to have those dealt with by Brandon and Bill Kelly and me if that is necessary. So I'll make a motion that we approve the lighthouse lease that's been provided to us by Bill Kelly. Do I hear a second?
With final language to be decided between the attorneys.
Well, yes, but I don't think we should vote unless we're expecting very minor changes that are not really substantive in nature. I would not want this group to delegate to me or Brandon anything that's very substantive. And from what Nat just said, it doesn't sound like that's what he's concerned about. Is that true, Nat?
No, I agree in principle what you want, but I think your language has to have the acceptance of the final terms. Just don't say they're going to set the lease as it is right now because it's not acceptable to me.
But in what way, in what way, other than the foghorn thing? People need to know if they're being asked to make a decision.
Okay, but the two references, the first reference is in the second paragraph, and it begins with whereas. That's a preamble. That's not a separate section. That's not in the requirement portion. So the fact that the reference to the foghorn and the light are the responsibility of the Coast Guard and also in paragraph four, I don't see that that's an issue. I mean, what does that say to you, that there's two references? They don't contradict each other.
I want a clean version, and this whole deal came down at 5:00 with new leases. And I can, I will, can't speak for him, but if I don't want him to sign that lease until it's in its final acceptable stage, I think you need to, we've spent this far, this amount of time on this getting to where it should be. And I think if the motion is to accept the lease with final substantial changes, then fine.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, what we can do is we can vote with this understanding that substantively, we're all in agreement, and if there's some minor language thing that needs to come back before the full select board, then we'll have a special meeting. But and Brandon and I could share that with the select board so people can decide whether another meeting is necessary. But I'm concerned about meeting all of the timelines that, you know, state law requires for how, you know, counting backward from our May meetings, we have to have things finalized. And so that, I had thought before that today was kind of the last minute. So I would like us to approve this lease with the understanding that if there are minor changes requested by the Historical Society, that this group would authorize us making those minor changes. Are people in agreement with that?
I am.
I am, yes.
Okay, it's not that I don't want to satisfy you. It's just that I don't want to run into a time problem that means that this doesn't get voted on in May. That's my concern. So with that understanding.
His leases came down at 5:00 this afternoon and didn't contain what could have been in them. Maybe he wasn't aware of your urgency. So that's disappointing that we have to think about this and this concept.
Well, other than the thing about the foghorn and the light, I haven't heard you say what you're so worried about. What is it?
There was some language that our lawyer sent to Bill Kelly that dealt with insurance, and there are a couple of other things that she wanted moved and changed, and I'm not sure whether he has done that or. We just want to make sure that what the two of them have agreed upon, which is basically probably 99% of the lease, that the things that they haven't discussed get discussed and be put in the right place. Can we review the section which you're concerned about? We'll just have an agreement on that. You're going to have a lease in front of me.
There's some leases up here, man.
Yeah, but I also don't want to box Nat in that he's supposed to remember everything his lawyer talked to our lawyer about. That wouldn't really be fair. So I think that if we can vote on this conditionally so that so long as there isn't some consequential change that results from the conversations from the attorneys, we would delegate to Brandon to making that happen. And if there's something significant, then we'd have to have a special select board meeting.
Bill's message on the lease is, just so everybody's aware, is that they should be in final form. There's a few edits from the last version that were requested by Amanda Meter. Bill said she did not seek anything controversial or unreasonable, but she also has not reviewed these yet. He doesn't think that she would have any edits, and if she does, it will be housekeeping type items.
That's good enough.
Yeah, I think if we can vote on this lease with the understanding that if there's something important, we're going to bring it back to this group. It would be best because then we're in a position to get that cleaned up.
Stuff we don't have to bring it back if it's just tweaking, praising or something. I mean, 99% is pretty close.
Well, and if Phil is saying he thinks it's housekeeping. So are other select board members comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, so then, all in favor, raise your hands. Is that four? All right, thank you, everybody, and, you know, Nat will make sure that the lawyer, that if there's anything that needs to be cleaned up, you're going to see what our lawyer considers the final one. So the vote that we just took, essentially, once the lawyers clean it up, that will get printed as the measure on which the voters will make a decision.
We'll have the final within two days.
So the next issue before us, which is related to the leases we just voted on, is whether accepting the donation of the youth and scouting property on Snow's Point and the other parcels owned by that group, as well as these three leases, will be decided at a town meeting in person or on the written ballot. So I guess I'd open it up to the select board for your thoughts about that. Steve?
Yeah, I like the idea of it being in an open forum at town meeting because people might have questions and they can get them answered. If they're looking at a ballot, they're just going to make that decision probably on their own. I mean, who knows? They might go talk to someone, but it's certainly more difficult to get an answer that way.
Just a reminder, there's a public hearing for both of these issues.
That's true, and on the other side, just to be even-handed, you get more, a bigger turnout of voters on a written ballot, I think, probably, than would bother to attend in person at a town meeting. I mean, I'm fond of the old town meeting format. It's grassroots democracy. People thrashing things out in public. So that's, but, you know, I could certainly live with either one.
I'm for the ballot. I think it's a more measured, informative approach.
And besides, you're having a public meeting to go over it. Ahead of time.
I guess I feel the same way, that even though we know that the people who have the strongest vested interest will always come to a town meeting, and there's constructive discussion there. I feel like we kind of owe every voter in town a chance to make a decision. And as long as people do a good job at the public meeting that's held and in all the communications that go out about these proposals, you know, then we have a chance to, people have a chance to make their case for what we'll do with the Snow's Point property, the benefits of the leases, all of those things. So that's my thinking. I'm sure that the folks in the audience would like to weigh in on this. So I can't see you. If you raise your hand, Van, you want to call on people?
What type of verbiage are you guys proposing? Should we enter to a lease for 10 years or five years? Select board renewal? Is that the kind of verbiage you want to say?
No, this was to donate old cloths that belongs to.
Yeah, but the leases, the leases are the.
Oh, yeah. And the donation's also going to be either on a ballot or through town meeting also. I just wonder how you get all that in a little piece of paper. Hopefully, the public meeting will clarify any questions.
Well, it's not going to have every term of the leases in there. I mean, it may discuss the term for the particular lease, but that's all that's going to be in there. I mean, the leases will be available either online or in paper form for the voting booths. So people can become informed if they want to. People can become informed if they want to.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I don't have a problem either way. It goes either town meeting or on the ballot. But I just want to make sure that when you have the public hearing that the leases can't be amended.
Oh, it'll be way too late for that, Nat. I mean, that's the reason that I pushed for voting on these tonight because, you know, they'll, they'll be printed very soon, um, you know, for this reason. So, no, they're, it's.
It'll just be an up or down vote.
That's right. It'll be an up or down vote.
Hopefully not.
Ken?
Yeah, just a question. Um, if it's on the town ballot, will the recommendation of the select board be listed below it like we see when we see the warrant for town meeting items?
That's a good point.
Yeah, that is a good question. Um, what, and what, what are people's thoughts about that?
I don't think that usually appears on a written ballot regardless of what the topic is. I don't think I ever have seen a select board recommendation on that portion of the vote. Yes, on the warrants for town meeting, but no, not on the written ballot. I mean, maybe some, but I don't think I've ever seen that.
I guess that was my thought in terms of people seeing it on the ballot. People that don't learn anything about it tend to vote no because they don't know anything about it.
Where if it's on the warrant for the town meeting, then the recommendation from the select board is listed there, and people have knowledge of, of the select board's position.
Well, I think that the, given that there will be a fair amount of information posted on the website, um, there will be opportunities for us to say if the select board takes positions on these different issues. Um, I mean, obviously, every everything that goes on the ballot goes there because the select board voted for it to go there. Now, that doesn't mean people always in the privacy of a voting booth are gonna vote for something themselves, but.
I guess, I just throw that out as something to think about.
Well, it's certainly something that could be made clear at the public hearing. You know, if people, how people feel about these measures.
Thank you.
So, um, does somebody want to make a motion about, um, putting this on the ballot? It seems like, um, and I don't know what your plan is, Tammy, but, um, I don't see a reason why you need to be recused from this vote. Do you?
No, it tends to be part of the.
No, okay, so, um.
I, I move that the leases and the wire is property be voted on by ballot.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. Um.
One piece before we move on. I, I'm not sure, did we, did you all ever formally schedule the public hearing? I have it in the calendar for April seventh, but I don't know if it ever happened in this process formally or if it needs to.
I, I think that we have talked about that April seventh date, and that is again why I was feeling like we had to vote on, um, the lease, all the leases tonight because I mean, that's less than a month away. So yes, I think that is understood to be the date of that.
Okay, I was just following up on an email that you sent where we have not formally decided to hold a public meeting on these issues.
All right, so do we need to discuss that? Does anybody have any question about whether that should be the date? Okay, and.
Time wise.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We should do whatever's correct time wise.
Right, yeah. Yeah, Brandon, you and I had picked that date with Tara because counting backwards. Um, and I, and I kind of thought that was why we were, um, I don't know if bound is the correct word, but kind of committed to that date. And so the, um, Ashley and the Parks and Rec folks should know that that is the meeting at which they'll be given an opportunity to explain to the community why it's a good idea for people to vote in favor for accepting that donation of property.
I would include the Conservation Commission in that as well.
All right. And also the Historical Society folks now know that that's the date at which um, they'll have an opportunity to, you know, persuade people to vote for the leases. So everybody's kind of knows now that that's our, our opportunity for a co- community conversation about those topics that are going to be on the ballot. Is that at five o'clock, Brandon?
It is.
Okay, five o'clock on April seventh. And then we'll, um, we'll say that the select board will start immediately thereafter. I mean, given the number of things that may take a whole hour, but it may not. All right, well, thanks for clearing that up, Brandon. So we also have a request from the Cemetery Committee. Tammy, do you want to bring that forward?
Um, this is a, well, they refer to it as a budgetary motion of the Committee on Cemeteries here in St. George. Um, they're asking for a sum of ten thousand dollars be added to the twenty twenty-five St. Georgetown budget under the cemetery heading. And these funds will be used to pay for tree removal, new gravel for the avenues, new entrance gates, a flagpole and repainting of the Seaside Cemetery sign, and doing, starting to do some repairs on the headstones. Um, the, the motion was proposed by Patty Sinclair, and it was seconded by Jolene Godfrey, and the motion passed within the committee. And they also, um, wanted to raise the existing stipend for the sexton at the cemetery from thirty-five hundred dollars to six thousand dollars. And that motion was made by Jolene Godfrey, who's one of the committee members, and seconded by Bill Trophy, and that motion was passed by the committee. So they've asked that these amounts be adjusted or added to the current budget.
Okay, and, and, um, you know, we have met with the Budget Committee and gone through the budget, and just so everybody is reminded that the budget that we have reviewed already included an increase in the sexton um, payment from what's been thirty-five hundred to six thousand dollars. So that part is already reflected in the budget, and the piece that is not reflected in the budget that we've um, seen is this ten thousand dollars for work at the cemetery. Um, Brandon, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I think that there is plenty of work to be done in Seaside. I don't think that we have um, necessarily treated it like a town-owned property from a budget perspective historically, meaning we took it over and we added a line for somebody to, to mow it, but that's really it. And so there hasn't been anything to support some of the, um, more routine maintenance that doesn't fall under perpetual care. And so that is why their list is long. I think everything that they outlined is, um, accurate. I don't think that it all needs to happen in year one. And I frankly don't think that their entire list could happen in year one with ten thousand dollars allocated. I think that what they're looking to do is going to cost more than that. And so, um, I, I, I can certainly see the justification for the expense.
I'm trying to, and, you know, refreshing everybody's memory, um, historically, um, when we, you know, the Seaside Cemetery was not owned by the town. It became owned by the town something like eight years ago or something like that. And as Brandon said, we haven't really, other than mowing it, been treating it like it's a town property. Um, and one of the, um, recommendations from the cemetery and something that the, um, town manager has suggested is that going forward, whenever people buy graves at the Seaside Cemetery, um, the per, the amount spent on the purchase of the graves will be in a trust of money that will be spent on purposes just like this. But we haven't been, um, pulling money from a place like that. Is that right, Brandon?
Well, no, I was recommending that the grave purchases go to the care that support, the, the, the fund that supports perpetual care.
And, and you're not counting, well, what, what are you counting as perpetual care? I mean, headstones would be covered by that, right?
No.
No?
Headstones are not, it, it's really access to it. And so like, if you wanted to paint the gates, that would not be covered by perpetual care. And repairing headstones, that's not really on the town. It is, um, a thing that the Cemetery Committee would like to take on to see if they can find and organize a volunteer group to do it, and I think it's a, an, an important mission. Um, and that, and that Seaside really could benefit from more care. It's in pretty rough shape. Uh, but none of those fall under perpetual care.
I just wanted, I just wanted to point out that the Historical Society does go in, and every summer we've been going in and cleaning stones, and there's been discussion about learning to repair stones. So maybe the Historical Society and the town may want to work together on those projects because they, we've gone in and done a lot of free work.
Once a month, during the warmer weather.
Yeah, and, and so again, you know, it's, it's a town-owned property that is, you know, not really being supported by the town from a budgetary perspective, other than the mowing and, and the sexton.
Even, even though we should be.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We, we, we should be because we, we did, we did take over the ownership of it, and so.
Really beautiful piece of property.
Might we, might we look at it not in terms of the initial, like a bonus of ten thousand, but maybe we should be looking at putting something in place that would yearly come up with some amount, like six or seven thousand dollars or something like that, and that's perpetuated in time?
Ten thousand is not comprehensive for all of the work that needs to be done there, and so.
But does it have to all be done in one year? It's what I'm getting at.
And, and what I was saying is that it won't be even if ten thousand dollars is allocated.
Well, so ten thousand dollars over five years?
Well, except I'm thinking about the fact that we paid zero for the eight years that we've owned it, other than mowing. It seems like to allocating ten to try and start catching up with what needs to be done is reasonable, and Brandon's point is that it's not going to take care of everything. So to, to Van's point, we are going to have to make commitments beyond this year. But for this year, given that we've spent nothing since we bought it other than mowing, is that true? Brandon, well, of course, you, you weren't here, but.
That, that is true, though. Uh, I mean, there's some money spent on, you know, veterans' graves, but there's a separate fund for that. Um, and so, yeah, my suggestion is that it is likely that this ten thousand dollar line will become a recurring budget line.
Well, that's really what I'm asking.
Yes.
Is at what level are we?
And this can, is your recommendation that we include this in the budget, Ben?
Well, my recommendation to the Cemetery Committee was that they don't make a request more than ten thousand dollars, considering they were so late in the process, that it didn't have the same sort of vetting that the rest of the line items in the budget did. And so they should therefore keep the, the line on the smaller side.
Irene had a.
You were okay with ten, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have any idea how many trees that need to be taken down?
Yes, several.
Several. I had any idea on. Because basically having a tree taken down, it's going to cost about a thousand dollars.
At least. Probably more with some of these trees.
Yeah. So.
I had a huge tree taken down, and it did cost exactly a thousand dollars.
Frankly, I, I just, I wouldn't be comfortable recommending any more than ten thousand, knowing that it didn't go through the same process, uh, you know, that, that the Budget Committee did.
Right. Well, this is why we were eager to get a Cemetery Committee going, and I'm grateful that we do have one. And thank you, Tammy, for, um, being the liaison. And I think, you know, in the future, they will be ahead of the game and participating in the budget process differently. But I'm happy to make a motion that we, um, adjust the, the budget and add ten thousand dollars for this purpose.
Question? What about the set, the reimbursement for the sexton?
That's, that's already in.
Yeah, okay.
So do I hear a second?
I second you.
Ben?
Any, any other discussion? All in favor? Oops, sorry, Tammy.
I think that Dawn had expressed interest right now in taking down a couple of the most dangerous trees, she said. They had really large limbs that were either hanging or broke off or so, but I think she's planning on doing a little bit at a time. It's not gonna, obviously, all happen in one year. Anyway.
All right, well, we'll defer to the sexton and the town manager to figure out how they're going to spend the ten. But, um, all right, all in favor? That's everybody. Thank you. Um, the next item on our agenda, you will all recall that we voted a while back to establish an ad hoc committee, um, to work on a tax increment finance program for St. George TIF. And, um, I've met with and talked to a number of people, and Brandon has as well, um, to find some people to serve on that. And so, um, I would nominate the following four people who've agreed to serve. Carl Danielson, Van Thompson, Georg Hauves, and Alexa Cunningham. And for those of you who don't know, Carl was a real estate developer in California, and he's been a very active member of the Bud, of the Harbor Committee. You know Van, obviously. And Georg is a former businessman who serves on the Budget Committee. And, um, Alexa Cunningham is a business owner in town and a CPA. So.
From Bankrate.com.
Uh-oh.
A certified.
He heard me say her name. So, um. I need to call her by her nickname, I guess. Um, so I would nominate those people to serve on the TIF Committee. Um, do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? And if people learn of someone else who's interested in serving, um, please let Brandon or me know. I plan to attend all of the meetings. I expect Brandon will attend all of the meetings. And, um, if there's someone else interested in this. And the goal being that we would put to the voters a TIF proposal before April first, twenty twenty-six. Um, because April first is always the day when the state values, um, property sets the values for taxation purposes. And even before we have, um, our revaluation done, which will be by April first, twenty twenty-seven, you know, it's likely property will go up, and we want to freeze it. you know, it's likely property will go up and we wanna freeze it at the lowest point possible to capture as much money as possible. And there will be meetings about all of that for people to get better educated. And if anybody um, who watches the YouTube recording of this or is, um, here tonight, wants to know more about what a TIF is, we have a post on the town website. If you just type in T I F in the search bar, you can learn more about it. All right. Thank you, everybody.
When will the, um, when will this committee be meeting? Do we know yet? That's something I'm interested just in learning more about. So this, we don't know yet.
We'll be sending, um, an email out to the, the members to see what date they can all get together. Given that we have a CPA, I'm not sure if it'll be before April fifteenth. But they'll get posted on the town website and anybody can come. All their meetings will be public, just like this one.
I don't believe that there are a committee on the website yet. And so we, I will have Bill add that and say that there are still open seats for members. And then once that committee's added, you can always sign up for notifications for it so that you get a text or email for when they meet.
Okay, thank you.
One thing that was interesting, just a little tidbit, is that when I met with Gayorg, he said that he wanted to try to figure out how much money we might raise by doing a TIF over the thirty years, which is how long these programs live. And so he, uh, took away a bunch of Excel spreadsheets and information to start trying to project how much money we could raise to spend on infrastructure and things in town. If, um, if we do this kind of program. So it's, it was helpful to have somebody with the numbers perspective talking like that.
Warren's TIF program that encompasses their solar development is projected to raise somewhere in the ballpark of like twelve point three million over the thirty years.
So, you know, that's not a fortune, but it's money. It doesn't cost the taxpayers a cent to have a TIF program. And so it's basically, you know, money we wouldn't have to spend on infrastructure and other projects without doing it.
Their assessment for the state and the, and county?
Yes, that, I mean, the biggest change is in what you owe the county. Because you freeze the value, you know, say as of April or March thirtieth, you know, if we got it approved before April first, twenty twenty-six, you freeze it at that point. And then you, we owe the county based on the value of all properties combined in the town. So if that number is lower because we froze in some of them, we owe the county less. And we also get more money from the state for the school. So those are the big advantages of doing it. In addition to having the money you can spend on stuff you wanna spend money on.
Have we received, and have we received an updated application for the general store?
No, I just sent another email today to Veronica. Um, Terry had received a call from her and she had mentioned that they were still uncertain of their footprint because they didn't know what the town's plans were for Cold Storage Road. So I just reminded her that we were still waiting for updated plans for the road and, and a cost estimate. And until we have it, we can't really move forward with anything.
Yeah. And in case anybody is wondering, obviously Wendy's point is because very likely the TIF, part of the TIF district would be in Port Clyde. And so um, the value of the property as it is today with, you know, no building on there is way lower than it will be if there is a building that's rebuilt. So it'd be better to freeze the value at the lower level. So I, I just wanted everybody to be aware that, that if you didn't know already, the town calendar doesn't show meeting dates for the select board after May. Um, and I thought if we just plan to do our meetings every other week like this, we can have them on the town calendar through June. And then when a new select board is, um, elected and convenes shortly after the town meeting, we can decide if people wanna have different dates or change the time or anything like that. But I think we, for planning purposes, the town calendar needs to show our meetings until July first. Is that okay with everybody? Every other week until July first?
That's fine.
Okay. Brandon, the town manager's report.
Uh, the big thing going on right now is that roads are posted and they're also in pretty rough shape. You know, we had a lot of frost this winter and then a fast thaw. And so, uh, they're pretty fragile right now. And there's still a lot of work happening in town. Now, some of that is permitted based on arrangements with contractors, you know, either using, um, half loads and smaller trucks or, or, or whatever it may be. But there is still a lot of work that is happening in town that is not permitted. And so I'm spending a lot of time trying to get out and have conversations with, uh, contractors and see if we can figure out a plan. Yeah, I mean, you'll, you'll notice driving around that, uh, the roads are in rough shape right now. And I'm, I'm concerned about any da- additional damage caused to them, knowing that over the last few years, we've fallen behind on our road plan anyway. And so trying to get caught back up, um, will be a challenge on its own. We are also, there's, our enforcement is very limited. You know, we can post the roads and hope that people uh, listen, you know, or, or call us to figure out a plan. But beyond that, there it's limited in terms of what we can really do. So that is the challenging piece. The planning board decided that they do not need to review the junkyard permit and that instead the select board needs to. Uh, so that will be coming to you all likely at the next meeting. And, uh, I'll make sure to send out the application as well as some of the state statutes around.
This is the one on Walston, right? The one that was?
So this is for the junkyard that is currently on Ripley Creek. His, uh, permit application is proposing moving it to Walston Road.
The one ninety-nine Walston.
Yes, and they were going to need to fill out a junkyard permit application, even if he was not moving his stuff there.
Right.
So that's scheduled for tomorrow night with the planning board. I mean, that's not happening with them now?
That is not happening. The planning board is gonna have a discussion around sort of home businesses in town in general, uh, and clarify some of the precedents that have been set, uh, around when something does require a, a site plan review or when something falls under, you know, home occupancy. And so that will still be happening tomorrow. But they will not be reviewing the junkyard permit. Frankly, I am hesitant to do much in terms of asking him to clean up or change the site at this moment because he has filled out his permit application and, you know, now the town has postponed on him. And so, you know, my approach is to leave it be until, you know, we go through the, the permit application process.
So since this is the first ever, um, application that we're aware of, that's for a junkyard permit coming to the select board, we're gonna have to figure out our, um, process for that, right?
I mean, really, Anne's thought is that you would review it in the same way that you would review a liquor license or a wharf?
I think there's a review. I think there's gonna be more review in terms of the requirements.
All of the, all of the requirements are outlined by the state. And so it will certainly require you all to review those statutes. Um, but in terms of deciding, there's nothing to be developed or decided by you. Um, but you do, you will need to interpret the, what the state has outlined and, and whether or not his plan will be in compliance with it.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll, um, we'll do our homework when you send us that information about what we need to review. About his application for the next meeting because it is something different than what we've done in the past. Thanks.
Um, let's see. I'm working on updating, uh, personnel policy. Tara and I are working on that and we'll be bringing it to you all before the, the new fiscal year. So stay tuned for that. Been working with the fire chiefs on updating job descriptions. Then we had a, hosted the site visit for the RFP that went out from the resilience committee. There was a good turnout, maybe, uh, fourteen or so interested parties, which was great, considering it was a cold and rainy morning. So that went well. Otherwise, nothing major at this point.
All right. Well, then we'll go to the committee reports. We'll skip the planning board for the moment. Van, you wanna talk about the harbor committee?
Well, I don't know if there's anything major happened in the harbor, harbor committee at this point. We're waiting for the next meeting, aren't we?
Yeah, the next meeting is in April and it will be onsite. And so nothing has happened since we last met.
Okay. And the budget committee, there's no update since they've come to this group. Tammy, is there anything else from the cemetery committee you wanna report?
Um, they met on March sixth here at the town office and they had speaker, um, Jean Matlock. She came in to discuss green burials. And the committee was quite interested in it and they're going to start investigating how they might be able to bring it here somewhere in St. George. What the process we have to go through as far as, you know, what the town needs to do. It didn't sound terribly complicated according to Jean, but I, I would assume that there's gotta be more to it than, you know, all you need is an ordinance and a place to dig a hole and put a body.
The issue is usually for that is water quality.
Yes.
Because the caskets, they pull out the bottom of it and then the body deteriorates. Okay, that.
It's just wrapped in a shroud. Then they line the hole with pine boughs and just.
I know, but I mean, it's, I'm not saying that that is, it can't work, but think of all the things in people's bodies these days that goes into, yeah.
Contamination.
Yeah, heavy metals and stuff and that goes.
She said, no, that was a non-issue that.
That's not right. That's not right. Yeah.
Anyway, it was a very interesting program and they're going to look into it to see if they can somehow bring it to St. George.
So at this point, we do not allow green burials?
Right.
Right. There's a whole, did, did she say, Tammy, my recollection was that the state has some criteria for green burials and we'd have to have some kind of permission if you have a s- place designated. So because there's, there's no place designated now in St. George. So there's currently, certainly not at the seaside cemetery. There's no green burials, which is our only cemetery that's owned by the town. But, so, so I know, I know somebody, um, we heard through the grapevine that somebody claimed that someone at the town office told them that green burials were permitted. But that is not true. So if someone at the town office thinks that, Brandon, you need to, um, correct that misimpression. And it may be that whoever was saying that around town, um, misspoke. I don't know, but I heard that.
I believe the message was that there's no ordinance around green burials.
Right. But if, that's true. But if the state has to approve a place where they're going to be allowed, we don't have any place where they're allowed either.
Right.
So.
Currently only three places in the state of Maine that do allow green burials. And one of those was certified by the Green Burial Council. And when you're involved with them, you have to, in addition to the green burial site, you have to have conservation land. So it's like a two-part thing. It's not just you bury the, if it's certified, you have to go through a lot of, a lot, a lot more process. So anyway, they're gonna start the investigation to see if it's something eventually we might be able to do in St. George.
Now, if another cemetery wanted to go through that process, so meaning not at seaside, that would not really be a town process, correct? And so, I think that was the confusion is that in theory, we do allow green burials. No, I don't believe anybody in town has a site that is approved for them, but we don't have anything prohibiting that.
Right, that's true.
So I believe that is the confusion from the, out of the town office.
Like the Ridge Cemetery or another private cemetery and speak to them about it. And their program in April is going to be related to sea level rise and how it may change seaside cemetery. Because they were, the, the lower part was sort of flooded out after the storms we had. So they're gonna come, somebody's gonna come and talk about sea level rise. And I do have a couple of pamphlets. If anybody's interested in reading about green burials and they also. Um, and I also asked about related to the chemicals and things. And she said that people really shouldn't be cremated and dump the ashes around because they're buried toxic.
Well, that's true too.
And a company has started offering this stuff that you ash, your ashes to make them less toxic before being buried. So.
Okay.
So anyway, there you go.
All right. Thank you.
Well, and as, as the cemetery committee learns more information like this, I hope they will post it on their section of the town website so that people who see this on our YouTube recordings or have questions, if they read the minutes, will be able to look that stuff up there for links and whatnot.
At the next meeting that they, if they can do that to get information to people.
Wendy, we skipped over the planning board while you were out. So if you could do that.
The planning board considered, um, an application for a subdivision on Walston and Turkey Cove. And it really became a pre-application meeting. And there's a proposal for something called the Dizer subdivision by Brian Fields. Um, there's, there would be seven residential lots on twenty-four acres, three to four acre parcels. Um, and I guess he has offered lot number seven on Walston to the town for expansion of the transfer station. Um, so it's just at the beginning of the review. They've had, that night was the pre-application meeting. The planning board has asked him to correct some of the things in the application and add some additional, um, information on maps. And, um, they wanna see the septic report. And there's gonna be, um, a site visit Saturday, March twenty-second at nine AM. And people are to meet and park at the transfer station. Um, there was another application from the Pearson family um, in terms of adding four feet to the boathouse and lifting it up on their Donut Point Cottage. Um, the application was deemed complete. And, um, I believe the application was approved. That, that was it.
Thank you. And the Board of Appeals has not met. Is that right? Okay. Um, the emergency services committee, their last meeting was chock full of stuff that you'll all be very interested in. The sheriff came, um, and talked about all of the services they provide and the number and types of calls they receive in St. George. One of the reasons that he was invited to come was that, um, when the summer survey was conducted by the comprehensive plan committee, there was notable dissatisfaction with law enforcement from the sheriff's department. Um, I mean, it wasn't like a huge outcry, but compared to the, how happy people are with the services provided in the town office, for example, um, or by our ambulance and fire people locally, um, there are a fair number of us who are frustrated with lack of enforcement for speeding in particular. Um, and so he talked about why that is, which as you can imagine, it's largely a workforce issue. Um, of the eighteen towns in Knox County, four of them have their own police departments, but fourteen, including us, um, do not. And with only two or three deputies on duty for fourteen towns at any given time, responding to every kind of call, domestic violence. I haven't heard from my mother in three days. Go, you know, do a check, blah, blah. They basically have almost no time for patrolling, um, like speeding and things like that. Um, and he has asked for four additional deputies in the county budget process, but so far has gotten nowhere with that. Um, and so things that were discussed were that we could lobby our county commissioners for additional funding for the sheriff's department so that we do get some more service from them. Or, or another option would be if people in St. George feel strongly that we want a deputy assigned to St. George, we could pay the county sheriff's department a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and have a dedicated deputy for forty hours a week. So those are things to think about for the future. And I do think that he would be willing to come down again and do a bigger more, you know, I mean, it was broadcast that he was coming, but I'm not sure. Um, I was surprised there weren't more people that attended that meeting because it was very interesting. Um, and, um, in addition to his presentation, that meeting also included a presentation on the strategic plan for the fire department, which is, um, still being worked on with Brandon and, um, I think that will be brought to the select board in due course, once that's finalized. Uh, they're also planning to work on a strategic plan for the ambulance department. And this includes things like, you know, the planning period for buying new ambulances and equipment and, um, tanker trucks and other things we hear about regularly, but it's a little more, um, broad than what we generally have heard. And the third thing they heard was a very nice presentation on the community paramedicine program from our new ambulance director and, um,
EMS.
Pardon? Chief?
EMS chief, yes, is what they.
EMS chief is the title?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and her sidekick Hannah, I don't know what her title is. Uh, deputy. So that again, I thought was a terrific presentation and I hope they will come and do that for the select board. I'm sure they will. Um, so that's it for the emergency services committee report and I will move on to the comprehensive planning committee report. Um, they held an event at the school last week, which some of you attended and was very interesting. I don't, how many people do you think were there, Steve? Eighty or something?
It was just a strong turnout. I didn't do any crowd estimates, but.
But it was, it was a, it was a good crowd.
Yeah.
Yeah. And like, and.
It might have been the free pizza.
Yeah, well, free pizza and also.
Are interested, seriously.
Right. Parents and grandparents were happy to come because the cheerleaders performed and, um, the band played. So it was really fun to see the students, um, doing things that they love to do and that was fun. And then, um, the group, the room broke up into little focus discussion groups um, to talk about issues in the comprehensive plan. So for example, I was the facilitator for a group that talked about land use issues. But that, and Steve was in a group where they talked about transportation issues. There were some that talked about different education issues and conservation and all of that. And I was really surprised. The people in my group talked non-stop from the minute we sat down until it was time to wrap up. They had a lot to say and, um, so one more great thing the comprehensive plan committee has done to get input as they put their plan together and they're working hard on getting it done. They had a workshop on Saturday. They're meeting tomorrow night and they have another three-hour workshop in two weeks, like a week from Saturday. Um, so in that they are hoping that it will be in very good shape soon. I am proposing that the select board set aside a special select board meeting for Monday, April twenty-eighth, which is not one of our usual every other Monday nights. Um, to hear from the comprehensive plan committee, the, um, the recommendations in the plan, um, and get the select board's approval or input that needs to be incorporated before you feel like it would be final. So you would be seeing the draft to review one to two weeks before April twenty-eighth. Because it's, the, the plan is still being worked on. For example, Brandon and his staff are looking at it now and filling in blanks and correcting errors and so forth. Um, and all the committee chairs have had it to provide info, input, but obviously the select board's input is critical and your approval is critical before the next step. Um, and so by the time you see it, everybody else will have seen it and weighed in. Um, so what do people think about a special meeting on April twenty-eighth that's just about the comprehensive plan?
Is it not something we could incorporate into a regular meeting if we had a light agenda?
It would have to be very light agenda because um, the, you know, essentially when the comprehensive plan gets adopted by the voters, it becomes an ordinance that's binding on the town. And so it's been very important as we, as the group crafts the language and all of us who've reviewed the draft that we can live with the language in there binding us. So we don't want to say we're, we're definitely going to raise Cold Storage Road three feet in twenty twenty-six. Unless we're really committing to do that. Um, so a lot of the language is saying things like explore raising roads to deal with sea level rise and things like that. But I think that this group is in the best position to judge. And it's also our responsibility ultimately to put something to the voters, um, needs to go through the things that would be binding and decide about the language. So it's not just going to be like a once-over lightly kind of review.
Given the, uh, the breadth and depth of what's there, I think it really is going to take a special meeting to go over the policies and so forth that are in each of the areas.
Yeah, and the way that it's structured, there's the narrative that talks about the town and the priorities and the things that came out from interviews and surveys and all of that. And that's sort of general information. But the things that would be binding are in these like tables of a policy that the town is adopting and strategies for accomplishing that policy. And so the plan would be to have a PowerPoint where we went through the however many twenty charts like that or something that are in the plan so that this group could say, you know, yeah, that's a great idea or no, I don't think we should be focusing on fill in the blank or whatever.
Should it be a workshop versus a special town meeting, like less formal?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Okay.
And then, I mean, in the end, I, I'm not, I'm not thinking that the April twenty-eighth or whenever this meeting happens. I'm not thinking that that's going to be the last word, uh, you know, with this group because I am expecting this group to have some substantive, uh, impression changes that you want to make. I mean, it just would be normal, you know? And so after you review it and, and provide your input, then those changes will have to be incorporated. And then it would come back to this group and we would vote on whether it's ready to submit to the state for approval or have it go to a public meeting, you know, before the state approves it. Um, because that's, you know, the process is that we have to submit it to the state for their approval. And then once they approve it, we'll submit it to the voters for them to vote on it. But what I'm wondering about there too is whether Van commented about this earlier, you know, um, at what point do we want to have, obviously because it's like an ordinance, we will have to have a public hearing before the public votes on it. But do we want to have one more sort of community conversation about the plan before it goes to the state? But we can think about that when you look at it at this workshop. Um, so I guess maybe what we'll do is, um, circular, I, we, we don't have to decide in this public meeting if it's going to be Monday, April twenty-eighth, or if it's better for people on a Saturday morning or whatever you want to do.
Um, I think a Monday evening is a reasonable. Anybody else have concerns about that?
Whatever works.
For the workshop? And then take a Saturday morning.
Okay. All right, then we'll, we'll go, we'll shoot for April twenty-eighth knowing that something could change with the comprehensive plan committee and it isn't ready by then, but that's, um, that's the goal. And I think that's great. Thank you. So the conservation commission, I see that Ken is here. Do you want him to report or Steve? Do you want to go?
And if, if you'd like to go ahead, I, I mean, there's that fun story about Owen and his canoe rack, so. Yeah, I did hear. Not sure Ken heard.
Ken, you're on mute. Are you going to join us and share? Maybe not.
I can give a report on it anyway. I was at the meeting on Thursday and it was.
I'm going to speak for Ken. He went downstairs to watch the Connecticut basketball game.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, um, so, um, the fun part of the meeting was an eighth grader named Owen Reynolds came to the meeting with, uh, Stu Rich and, and the, uh, Jess McGreevy, the principal was there and Amy Palmer, a teacher. And, uh, he has a whole plan to build a canoe rack for the marsh or canoe and kayak rack. And it, it wouldn't involve a foundation. It would just be, it would be essentially portable, but probably pretty heavy, not to be moved around much. And he still needed this eighth grader who was kind of shy, but was, was very, it was a pleasure to see him come forward and sort of see how government works a little bit. But he still needs to go to the library because I think he would want to put, build it down there on that, uh, on their frontage on the marsh. And, uh, anyway, so he got lots of encouragement from the, uh, commission members and, and, uh, I guess there's, there's some, you know, possibility people might donate some lumber for it or whatever, but, uh, well, there's a, there's a, one of our students taking some initiative to get involved and do something for the, the public.
The idea is that there would be, that you would be able to check out a canoe from the library in the same way that you'd be able to check out a book and, you know, there were talks of, um, working with the conservation to, you know, build a boat launch and even potentially, I mean, uh, I don't know if this part is still current, but you know, even potentially a portage trail to the, the, the back half of the marsh. And so, um, Ashley will work on trying to solicit donations of canoes for the library. Uh, and you know, again, just sort of supporting this idea of multi-generational recreation, uh,
Yeah.
available in the community.
Yeah, so there was some.
So Mike, I guess my question is where would the canoe rack be? Would it be on the property that was donated to the town or on the library property?
Library property, library property. And they've already found a site. There's not many places that are easy access to the, to the marsh, except when it's frozen. And they found one that's a little beyond the library, but not, not a long walk. And, and it's not, it might need a little trail work to get to it, but then it's on, you know, it's, it's a sloping place where you could put a kayak in with hopefully not capsizing on the way or a kayak. So I guess I haven't inspected the site, but they talked about it and it sounded, sounded doable. Anyway, so that's, that's a, something they're working on. The, the commission also talked about a, a long process of trying to get an accurate historical placard for Fort Point that there's this great confusion between Fort St. George and Fort St. George's and Tomston. Anyway, I never keep it straight, but there's, this would, would clarify that and what, what the fort is at our Fort Point, uh, when it existed and what it did. What else did they do? They talked about a little bit about the Old Woods Farm, uh, property that, that, that we have now and, yeah, uh, trail work and especially the entrance to it and maybe rewilding where a road was put in because it's not, it's beyond the parking lot, but making that more of a, uh, uh, pleasant trails. But in the end, they decided, let's just see what grows up. It comes up on its own because it could be very expensive if you had to dig up the gravel and so forth. That was something Willard put in was a road when he was thinking of developing.
The water district has a connection in the, that gravel driveway.
Well, maybe you don't want to mess with it.
Well, I mean, at some point we had to dig it up to access the connection. So.
Okay, I didn't know that, yeah. And then they discussed the, uh, the pending scouting property, uh, boat and, and how that could be part of, well, not, not the one on, on Snow's point, but the other one that's near the transfer station could be part of a trail network. And, uh, you know, kind of on the theory that people could connect some of the trails that we already have. So that was, that was exciting. And, uh, I think that was, you know, most of the the major points of the meeting. Certainly the, uh, having a student come to the meeting was a highlight with his.
Yeah, that's great.
And I didn't, I didn't know. I'm glad Brandon could add, add about the kayaks and canoes. I'm sure there's people around that would, would donate them. Oh, Jess. One last thing, Jess McGreevy, uh, the principal said something she seemed to think that maybe there could be some kind of like end of school regatta on the marsh. A good idea. Yeah, that's my report.
Well, thank you. Um, Parks and Rec. Oh, wait, I skipped over solid waste, but they're probably still on hiatus.
The solid waste will be reconvening on April seventeen. And the shelter committee meets on March eighteen.
Okay, thank you. So Parks and Rec.
Well, I had the, uh, the hoops, uh, the Muscle Ridge Hoops Tournament, uh, but again, they're meeting tonight at six thirty or bet.
Well, I had the uh, the hoops, uh, the Muscle Ridge Hoops Tournament, uh, but again, they're meeting tonight at six thirty or bet or in process. So I am once again here not knowing what's going on.
Uh, that is, that, that's really it was, they're likely just recapping the Muscle Ridge Tournament and so.
The tournament.
And then baseball and softball will be starting soon.
Do they are, do they talk at those committee meetings about possible uses of? The property donated by the Youth and Scouting Group? It seems to me like that's the Parks and Rec Committee and the young families. Are the ones that should be getting excited about that.
I'm sure now that the Muscle Ridge is, there's probably something they may be speaking about tonight.
They did talk about it when you were away and I sat in for you on a couple of meetings and, and they, they were enthusiastic. I think they thought it would be great to have that for sort of, especially in terms of maybe older people and recreational. Possibilities.
So um, Van, you might want to encourage those folks to attend the April seventh. Um, public hearing about that because as we all know from past public hearings. You know, it matters for supporters to show up and speak out for things that they want to see happen. And not just have naysayers take over the conversation.
I'll mention that.
All right, the Resilience Committee.
Uh, well, again, uh, what they were working on, of course, was the submission uh, through Brandon to the various. Engineering firms about coming up with a engineering plan for Cold Storage Road. Uh, to serve the uh, the public down there. And uh, the meeting was uh, on Tuesday morning, Thursday morning.
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning. Uh, and you had eight different companies show up. Representatives.
I thought it was even more than that. Maybe it was, yeah, fourteen people from eight companies, maybe is what it was, yeah.
Uh, they show up and they walked the site and had some discussions. And they've gone off and supposed to come back in July, I believe. With a initial bids, one of the bids due, no, it's sooner than that.
I had sooner than that. I don't remember when, but it, it's sooner than July.
Yeah, maybe the end of April somewhere.
Yeah, I think that sounds more accurate.
Sorry, I don't have that on the top of my head.
Well, I don't.
But that, that'll come to the Select Board when a decision needs to be made, is that right?
No, 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 it. That would be, what they would do would be, I don't think that's going to come to the Select Board. No, that's up to the committee. Because you're not, you've already, already said you're giving the grant to do that and to dispense the monies.
I just wondered if, if we need to approve a co- that for Brandon to sign a contract with somebody. I don't. Haven't we done that in past cases?
You could certainly approve it again. I think you approved it when you approved them to pursue this grant. You know, otherwise, um, but the Resilience Committee will be handling the evaluation and review of the RFPs that come in. And will make a selection.
Along with Brandon, along with Brandon.
Yeah.
So it would certainly be informational to, to, to the group. Uh, we can decide at that point whether you need to reaffirm with something.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm, I'm just not sure that the Select Board can delegate to a committee to enter into a contract on behalf of the town. Even if we've approved the whole thing in concept.
I would be entering into the contract.
Right, right.
We could authorize Brandon to do it if necessary, but I think he already has that.
Well, yeah, I guess in the, we have, I know we've done this in the past, so that's why I'm thinking. Um, we've had after there were RFPs, but we can figure this out. It's not imminent.
Right, most RFPs that you have approved though, and then we have entered into a contract after there. There wasn't the original approval process of pursuing a grant. Like, I'm not pursuing a grant for paving bid. So then you approve it, once I get the bids back, make a recommendation, then you typically approve me entering into the contract.
Right.
I, I, I would assume that you already did it because. If you weren't going to approve entering into a contract, then the, the grant never should have been pursued in the first place. It, so I, I mean, in my opinion, it, it feels redundant to do it again, but it's also.
That was my thought too, but it's, we can do it. I mean, you know, it'll be certainly something that uh, we could, we could reaffirm.
Cause I mean, there are, you know, there's a set. Uh, amount of money attached to it, so there's, it's not like it, that part is up for review or anything.
No, we, we approved monies to the supplemental money we had to put in with it to uh.
So you're feeling as, as long as the amount spent is within what we've already authorized, there would be no need for the Select Board to approve. The contractor that's being chosen.
Yeah, I mean, the amount's dictated by the grant anyway, so all, everybody bidding knows what the amount is. They're not bidding. On what they could do it for, they're sort of bidding.
It's not competitive.
Right, their, their plan of work.
Who could, they're bidding on who could do it better.
Yeah.
For that amount of money.
But I think keeping the board informed is the main thing. That's, and you're doing that.
Yeah, that will always happen.
Yeah. Great.
All right, well, thank you. Are there any other issues before us tonight?
I move for German.
But nobody said.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody.